Counseling Week, it was February first through the fifth. And I just wanted to highlight a little bit about our guidance counselors and work that's being done on the mental health side of, in our schools, but also as we develop students to prepare them for graduation and prepare them for careers. And our school, school guidance counselors really are all in, and that was the theme this year, was all in for all students. We recognize the tremendous impact that school counselors have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career, plan for college, plan for military service, a critical part of our process. And they are actively engaged in helping students examine their abilities, strengths, and interests and talents. They work in partnership with parents. They focus on positive ways to enhance students' academic development. And they're a part of the team. I mean, they work with teachers and other educators to provide a system where students can realize their potential. And so we're grateful for the work of our guidance counselors. And that's just what I wanted to highlight as we opened today.
Right.
And I knew this college has that background, and so we appreciate, you know, your experience there and your knowledge in that area, too, so.
Thanks.
Yes. And with that, the pastor, the new pastor at Cornsoil Baptist Church is Daryl Bruno, and he's with us, and I'd ask him to come and say an opening prayer and then have the pledge of allegiance. And so I'm going to ask Pastor Bruno to come up to the podium. I'd ask the audience, if we could all please stand for the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much just to be able to join together in harmony over our school board this afternoon. And God just asked that you would continue to guide and direct the leadership of our Citrus County School Board. Father, would you help us as we move through a time where it seems like there's still some confusion and challenge in the world and things rage with the pandemic? But God, I know you have raised up godly leaders, wise discernment. Father, would you continue to guide them as they make decisions for our young men and women? Father, would you continue to rise up our young men and women to be a next generation that will stand in the gap and continue to lead this nation? And God, would you be over our nation as we continue to try to move steadfast and forward and be a guiding light over our world? Father, we thank you so much for your leadership and ability over us as a, as a nation here. And Father, just asked that you would continue to love, guide, and direct each and every one of our steps. In heavenly name, my heart. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Parrish, before you move to approve the agenda, the superintendent of the whole item 12, the addition to the agreements with the Citrus County School Board and Raptor Technologies. We'll bring it back in a second.
I'll say, and it's item 12, and it's the school support services.
Yes, ma'am.
School support services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move adoption, I'm sorry, move adoption of the agenda of pulling item or removing item 12, the addition to the agreement for Raptor Technologies.
Okay. It's the move by the superintendent of the Senate by Doug. Yeah, so, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any citizens commenting? The citizens comments, none. Next, if you approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the move, um, simple, set by Doug, and who did the first?
Me.
Ms. Parrish.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Those, Terry Spies, you have to direct the meeting. Okay.
Approve the $500 donation to Hernando Elementary from Janice J. Hampton. Approve the $1,000 donation to Homocentric Elementary from the Homocentric Gate Fish Club. Approve the $850 donation to the Canton Primary School from the Canton Primary School TPO. Approve the $500 donation to Pleasant Grove Elementary from Janice J. Hampton. Approve the $1,000 donation to Pleasant Grove Elementary from Brennan Wheeler Kitting. Approve the $1,200 donation to Rockcrush Elementary from John Indiana Snare. Approve the $1,000 donation to the Canton School from Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $1,000 donation to the Canton Middle School from the Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Janice J. Hampton. Approve the $30,000 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from an anonymous donor. Approve the $1,000 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from the Kings Bay Rotary Charity Foundation in memory of Carson Guy. Approve the $500 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Greg Nixon. Approve the $500 donation to Wittenpooche Technical College from Innes, Dus, Grove 232. Approve the $500 donation to Wittenpooche Technical College from Papagev Pizza Pasta Sub. Approve the $1,500 donation to Wittenpooche Technical College from New Covenant United Methodist Church. Approve the $1,054, 30 cents donation to Wittenpooche Technical College from the Mario Wilson Memorial Scholarship Fund. Approve the $2,000 donation to Wittenpooche Technical College from St. Anne's Episcopal Church. And approve the $1,250 donation to Wittenpooche Technical College from Ratio Algebra Association of Distinguished Americans. That is a total of $45,854.32.
Did we say twice? Did we get twice the number?
Sorry? Okay.
Thank you very much. Doing the presentation, the graduates and current professional teacher.
I'm here on behalf of Saint Leo, the first.
Good afternoon, team. Very pleased to give you this, a positive and exciting news today. A little bit over two years ago, we presented some information to Ms. Semel, and she was ecstatic about it, about getting our Power Pros into the classrooms and starting the program at Saint Leo and getting that Power Pro to Teacher Program up and running. Right now, our ultimate goal was to get our experienced people into the classrooms, and we, we are continuing to meet that goal every day. Right now, to go into that program, you must have an AA degree, be a Power Pro for at least two years or more with Citrus County Schools, and then go through a program with Saint Leo. And what Citrus County School Boards said that they would do is pay for their internship, which would be continue to pay them their Power Pro salary at that stipend, and they would get their one to five day internship, get that completed, we replace them, do everything they needed to do to be successful, and they would continue to get paid during that internship, which is huge. As of right now, we have 15 people in that program, and three of them are here today because they graduated back in December of 2020. So, the first person I would like to recognize is Katrina Metzler. Could you stand?
Ms. Semel, if you would go forward, you know we need pictures.
And just have the table stacked as far as you can.
Can I stand here? Can I get my picture?
Yep.
So while that comes up, I'll let you know that Ms. Metzler was served as our Title One Federal Program Assistant in Ed Services Department. She graduated December of 2020 from Saint Leo, and she was hired at Hernando Elementary as a first grade teacher. And Mr. Kyle Jakes is here as well, supporting Hernando.
How are you doing?
Next person I would like to honor is Kelly Brady. Kelly served as a Power Pro at the Canton High School. She also graduated December of 2020 from Saint Leo and was hired at Crystal River Middle School as an English Language Arts teacher. And last, but certainly not least, is Emily Kimmons. Emily served as a Power Pro at Hernando Elementary. She also graduated from Saint Leo in December of 2020, and she was hired at Central Ridge Elementary as a first grade teacher. And Mr. Bossy is here as well.
It is, it is truly an honor as a former middle school English teacher with a sense of this, and I've worked with Kelly, and I know these teachers. It's beautiful to see what their dreams were to be able to come true with the support from the school board. So I thank you all, and congratulations to you.
And Saint Leo partnering with us, helping all of these students.
Like I said, we had 15 of them right now, and four of them are set to graduate in June of 2021, so we should have four more building right out of that.
So, as you know, all, all good things come to those who wait in perfect state. And I have to tell you, we are very excited today to recognize one of our former students. She graduated from Crystal River High School and earned the Gold Award, and we have been trying and trying and trying, and I appreciate Bailey's patience in being able to bring her to the board and be able to share with you about her project and the work that she has done to achieve for the Girl Scouts one of the highest awards possible. It's called the, the Gold Award. And so I'm going to invite Bailey, if she would come up and, and share kind of the work that she's done.
I'm not going to say it, but, so.
Yeah, come on. You take your mask off to speak.
Okay, so my project, I complete, I started spring break of 2019, trying to plan it, and then I actually submitted paperwork to a Girl Scout of West Center, Florida, a previously GSWCF. And after doing the paperwork process, you just pretty much send them an idea and pretty much frame out how you're going to conduct your projects. So my project was titled Light Your Way to a Safe Education. So what I did was in every Citrus County middle and high school, I provided these reflectors. And they are LED, and I provided them for students to ride the bus or walk or bike in the early morning so that they could get to school. And this literally just flips onto your backpack, so it's not like, and it's not a hard process. It literally just flips on, and then there's three modes, and then those students pretty, they just have to flip it on, and it was available to them at either the front desk of their middle and high school, or their bus driver had limited amount, but if they needed more, I supplied more. So I got a generous grant from the Black Diamond Foundation and the Chris River, Kings Bay Rotary, Kings Bay Rotary Club, and I was able to buy 2,000 reflectors in total and then distribute them to the high school and middle schools. And my project is, for a Goldenrod project, it's required that it is continued after you have graduated or after you have become an adult Girl Scout, so it's now being continued by the Citrus County School Board, Citrus County Schools Transportation, and Marilyn Palmer is the one continuing my project, so.
Do you just want to share what you're doing right now? Because normally when a student would come, they'd be graduating and they're ready to embark on journey. And now it's been almost, coming up on the year of what you've been doing. So why don't you share where you are and what you're.
I go to UF, so I am majoring in political science. I graduate, I'm actually, I entered as a sophomore by credit because I went, I was a dual norman, and I completed AB classes. So I go to UF, I'm a political science major, and I actually just joined a sorority, I'm in five U, so, yeah, it's pretty much small. I have Ms. Howard, she's my fourth grade teacher. So I have a class at Homocentric Elementary. And then my mother, Julie Edwards, and then my dad, Kent Edwards. It's so hard to not say, my very proud, that's what I call them, anyway. But, yeah, oh, Ms. Howard was my mentor on this project, and she helped me obtain the funding from Black Diamond Foundation and Kings Bay Rotary so that I could actually implement this project. So, big thanks to Ms. Howard.
I was recognizing some of, or admiring some of Bailey's badges, which really shows your hard work and commitment, but I will tell you, there's one badge on her back that in 1962 I got, it was the Cookie Pro Badge. Mom was probably for eating the most cookies, sure as baby for selling the most cookies. So congratulations, Bailey, what a job well done.
Sometimes we, Brendan and I, and before that Steve and I, and before that Johnny and
We are so proud of you, and you certainly put another big golden star for Citrus County
I, would bring her some crazy ideas and outside the box ideas, but she is always very supportive of anything that we bring forward to here.
Schools, so congratulations.
Fortunately, this year, I didn't get my sentiments from Bailey because Bailey's
And as always, go do whatever, we'll support you in any way we need to. So I appreciate that, Ms. Semel. Thank you for all you do to support.
not doing them, and so.
And just what a great program.
Unable to, but I did mine.
These are, these are paraprofessionals who are going to stay. Their families are here, their spouses are here, significant others, and they are going to stay in our district and teach our children for 30 years. So we're just very excited, and it's great to see successes like that. And I want to thank the board, too, and all, always supporting HR and Citrus County Schools, so thank you for that.
And Susie, on that, do they, do they actually get retirement years during, while they were parents? So they actually, I mean, you said 30 years, and we would love for them to stay there, but I mean, they actually would have had time.
That is correct.
Their clock would have already started, so.
Yes, that is correct. You are correct. They will get time, credit for their period of yours through FRS. You are correct. I would ask the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Move approval of, I'm sorry, instructional and support recommendations?
Second.
Approved by Ms. Lynn, second, second by.
Let me count.
Don't say you when you're just.
I'm going to have to ask again, sorry. To approve the support and instructional recommendations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, Terry Spies, your opinion?
I would ask the board's approval of the, a new job description, the Public Safety Training Center Training Sergeant Job Description. We did add a part, and I highlighted it for the board, in qualifications, item number two. It now states minimum of 10 years of experience in the law enforcement and/or corrections field. So we added and/or corrections field to the job description.
Move approval of the new job description for Public Safety Training Center Training Sergeant?
Second.
Will I have to?
Okay. Moved by the discount, second by Mrs. Ryan to approve the new job description for Public Safety Training Center in addition to the added.
And slash or corrections.
Yes, so, you know, I appreciate, you know, the opportunity for us to be a part of these job descriptions, you know. So I just, I, I kind of wanted to just make sure the board is aware that this is a corrections officer position that is going to be, that's already a position that's funded by the school board. But it's going to be made into, instead of coordinator, it's going to be made into a sergeant's position to train in the corrections field, Corrections Academy, but it will be supporting the Police Department and Dave Vincent as the chief. So there is, in this job description, some things that can help with the function of the Police Department. And mainly, I know in there, it talks about the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool, you know, that's an important part. These are duties that will be under the direction of Chief Vincent. But there are duties in there that include that, and this person will be a sworn law enforcement officer.
That is correct.
So they're not a civilian coordinator, it's a sworn position, but the sergeant rank would be indicative of a person in that position, to be a sergeant, to train corrections officers. I know there's also some reference to the Guardian Program in there, and there's, that's a natural progression there as well because of the Guardians that we have, to train the Guardians. So, you know, I know on the agenda, we have another part coming up towards the end about gratifying the letter from the superintendent, but I just want to make sure this position is that coordinator's position in corrections that has always been the school board's position. It's just that it's being re-titled and put in a different area of supervision. Would that be correct?
Correct. The former position was considered a coordinator's position in the agreement with the Sheriff's Department. It was a teaching position for us. Now we have moved this to a 12-month professional technical position because of the added responsibilities.
And moved it under the direction of the chief?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And, and Mr. Dodd, I just, I appreciate you talking and walking us through that and walking the public through, seeing that, that there was no real, while it's a new job description for us, it's not a new position, we already are funding it, but now because it brings it under the school system, we have some additional benefits with student safety, with district safety coordinating, and coordinating that all through our police chief. Is that correct? Because that's, that's how I understood it.
That's, that's the way I understand it, too. That's correct. Yeah. Because there's another coordinator, another position that the Sheriff's Office has, is the training, they have a training sergeant, does the law enforcement academy. And, you know, thank goodness, we've got this academy here at WTC. They come from all, all's town and counties come here to our training center, our Public Safety Training Center, where they are trained in law enforcement and corrections. And so, I mean, it's a great program for us, and it's been there. I mean, I, I mean, I went through the academy. Tom Kern was the director back in the day, you know, and so that's where people can go locally and be trained and certified and work locally. And so I'm, you know, I'm glad, we should be fortunate to have that type of academy right here in Citrus County.
And that, that academy, and, oh, Chief, here, here, maybe you can answer. That academy long predates, I mean, a lot of us, for sure. It's been around.
Not all of us.
For, it's, it's been around for decades now, the, the academy itself as. And am I correct that that's still, that has to be operated through a, an educational institution as far as the, the operations of it does fall to some of the, the educational, local educational institution?
Sure. Our, our academy is under the umbrella of Wittenpooche Technical College as the governing body for the academy. It wouldn't exist without the college there as well. The college is obviously the guidelines for operation. That is from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, that gives you the rules of day-to-day operation, basic recruit training. But ultimately, the responsibility of that academy has always been under the school district. You know, it's, if I, if I may, it's right, I believe it was 1973, I might have been two at that time, so I spent there. I'm a 1993 graduate of our academy there across the street, so a very, very proud. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to be involved with the Police Department there and have some additional responsibilities for that position, working in conjunction with Director Bishop over at the college. I think it'd be a good partnership there for that.
And you yourself were, were over that academy at one time.
I was, yeah. I was the training center director, I was a former recruit, too.
Would you carry a message to them? A long time ago, the neighbors were having a place that's, they see offline and stuff, they were just wood color, so y'all went out and went green. They're still about to do with an arcing green, so if you can tell them what you're saying, they'll listen to the neighbors that's going to have.
Right, right. I recall those, those kind of things.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Feel like that scene in Shrek where they're, you know, saying, number one, number two, three.
In January, I presented to you our 21, 22 calendars, the calendars that had the most votes, and it was your desire for us to revote. its time. We had a total of 1,257 participants, that is 245 more votes than we had in November, which is good. So we did collect more votes. Calendar three, as you can see, did still win. You remember, it only won by three votes in January when I presented to you. Now it is winning by 217 votes. So according to our recalculation, a revote, calendar three did win with almost 60% of the votes, with more staff voting. So that's another, another plus. The rest of the, the slides that you have there is just really just for your own information to see the breakdown of it. You do see, remember, we had two SAC committees that did have to do a revote because they voted for calendar one at the beginning of the school year, or in semester one, and they did revote, so you'll see that those votes are in there. One of them did go with calendar two, the other one voted for calendar three. So you see the, the breakdown there in orange, the 14 did go for calendar three, six went for calendar two. You see the participation in the pie graph there of who voted from what, what departments, whether it be a level of school or district instructional or district support, and then you see the SAC votes as well. What, what this one here tells you, whereas the two bars, that's what shows you that each one of those departments or levels, the amount of people that voted for calendar two and calendar three in each one of those. And you'll notice that in each one of those, more people in those departments voted for calendar three. In elementary, more voted for calendar three, and with secondary, the district instructional, district support. And remember that other piece, we included multiple different departments. The other included, I wrote those down so that crest, virtual teachers, WTC, and Renaissance were calculated with those others. So there you can see who each one of those voted for. Then we even break it down for school for you, no need for us to talk about it in the presentation tape, but it really is more for your information so that you can see SAC votes compared to staff at those, at those schools, for secondary as well. Here was the breakdown of what were the options, what were the differences in options when you looked at the calendars. when you looked at the calendars. And again, calendar three is where we put the star there, and so this is what our calendar will look like for the 21, 22, if you approve it. Um, it does, of course, have the 180 instructional days and 190 teacher days, plus the six paid teacher holidays.
I'll make a motion to approve calendar number three.
Second.
Dodd, I approve calendar number three. Mr. Kennedy, second.
Just thank you. I know that was a lot of work, but I really think it just solidified it. There's not a question, I feel like it, it, I appreciate it because I know it's hard.
It's hard for you.
Thank you.
We just need to vote those.
Oh.
We just need to call the vote.
Yeah. I thought we all did. I'm, I'm losing it. Yeah. All of them.
Hi.
Do you, you want to post?
No. I want to. Yeah, I want to.
I, I called for the, I made the motion, Mr. Kennedy, second.
That's right. Thank you. I need to rock it down.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
She keeps trying every single thing that has to do.
I tried.
I'm here to give an update for Citrus Cares, and so just kind of wanted to share with you all some of the, um, additions, changes that we are going to make in our cares plan. First of all, the, um, I'm going to start with our quarantine guidance regarding return to work and school letters, um, and this is in several of the sections listed in the plan. Our staff currently, if they, before today, they would get a letter from the Department of Health, but the, that has now shifted. What's happened is, um, the Department of Health communicates with our district student services, and district student services then notifies and communicates with the schools. So that is, that is the shift that, that we made within the plan, kind of showing that that's more the focus of our, our staff returning to work. For students, um, in the past, they had to get a letter from the Department of Health. Now what happens is when a student, um, makes the initial call, um, that they have, um, are going to need to be quarantined, the determination at that time is communicated to the family how long that student will be out. So there is a, a formal letter that is given to the, the district at this point. Note that Department of Health is focused on vaccines at this point, not focused on the testing. Um, but the communication occurs at the beginning from our conversation with Ms. Humboldt and Ms. Greco, doesn't occur as it would where we're waiting for all of that as we did at the beginning. So that is one change that we then put in the plan of how the, um, students are informed and the staff is informed.
Can I?
Yes.
Ask a question? Yeah, I kind of, I want you to clarify this a little bit because I, I want to make sure I understand, so we're not, the students not getting anything written from the health department?
That, and Ms. Crowe is with me. That is correct.
That's true.
Okay. And so, and now it's, we are, I think we've been the ones that have been notifying the
student's parent, right? That the student's quar, I'm talking about in terms of quarantine.
Do, do you want to share?
So I'm, I'm talking about a contact with a positive case, quarantine.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we're, we're down to 10 days on the quarantine, not 14, we're, we're down to 10, and now we're going back to when the, the, the person first had symptoms. So it could actually be less than 10 days. So who's making that determination? That's still the Health Department, isn't it?
It's, the 10 days is the, from the symptoms, you know, when they're asymptomatic, and then it, it's calculated another way if they're, I mean, if they're symptomatic, if they're asymptomatic, then we use another method of counting the 10 days.
Right, but if there's.
The Health Department is determining that.
Okay. So, the, Mr., uh, Dr. Hebert said there's been a change on, on that, so explain to me, what's the change here?
Instead of us giving a letter, where the, where the schools are waiting for letters from the families, there's a conversation that occurs with the Department of Health and the parent upfront, instead of being afterwards. Normally it was afterwards. Am I correct?
They're not sending, they're not giving us a return to school letter anymore.
So like a day before, it is generally a day or maybe two days before, we receive an email, and that email will have however many students are on there, the student's name, and when they can return to school. We send that out to each one of the individual schools. They send it in a whole thing. We just copy and paste it, you know, LaCanto Middle, LaCanto Primary. The school gets it. For the school to keep records in the event that there was an audit or something, we have what we called, when we first started doing COVID, a blanket letter. So they are filling out those letters, so they would put Doug Dodd, they would put the dates that you were gone, put it in that child's attendance file, so that we have on-file documentation of why that student was out. For the staff, it's the same thing. They're sending us the information, we relay that to, um, the school to let them know when a staff member can come out, and then, um, they receive, they, the staff, for their documentation, if they need to turn in something to Mr. Benomo and Ms. Swain, receive a return to work letter, and, um, Jen Greco is actually sending that. I, you know, she gets those, so we have one person disseminating that. Any staff that's out, she sends them a letter, again, for that documentation.
Ms. Humboldt, the, I, I know having my, my child went through a quarantine period, they, we also, as a parent, got a letter at that time from the Health Department, like you're saying, a couple of days before. So if it was on Monday was when, let's say, the quarantine period would be up, I would get a letter that I would, in theory, bring back to school with my, you know, with, with my child in return. So is that also, do you know?
That, yeah, we're, they're really not doing any letter at all.
That came through DOH as well.
That's correct.
That didn't come through us. So then the other piece of that is, there was a daily check-in that DOH was doing. Now, in my case, it was done through a text, and I responded as a parent to that text that said there were no symptoms, for example. Um, I believe there was also an alternative that you could talk to a person or something. Is that going away as well?
I, I don't want to say for sure one way or the other. I don't believe it is, but I cannot answer that 100% that they are still doing that. Like Dr. Hebert said, the focus has shifted to the vaccinations and, um.
And, and I, I agree with that.
So that's why we worked out something with them, where we're providing evidence, you know, in the event, to show attendance for audits, and then to help staff if they have to, um, work with, uh, HR. But I, I think just the amount of time that it's taken, I, I, I would doubt that they're able to do that right now.
Because again, the letter makes, I understand not having that process, but, um, but, but, I mean, the text and so forth, it was very painless, and it's, it certainly was a reminder that we all want, if you're symptomatic while you're out, to do that, that kind of feels like that burden's shifting back to us.
That's, that was, that's kind of.
That's my concern too.
We will double-check on that. I know that, that was a, a nice service, but I, I just, I will find out.
And, and the other piece of that is, you know, all of this works well when they're our student and there's a contact tracing that we're involved in, but there's a lot of circumstances where if there are weekend contact, we're less connected, and if it's an out-of-county contact, we're, you know, we're really out of the loop. Does, is that changing any of that, or is that still where we're very dependent on the families and to be a part of that, and in the case of employees then?
Well, the weekend contacts, um, we work that in, in Student Services. Every weekend we take turns, and we track those from whatever we receive, all day Saturday and all day Sunday from the Health Department.
So they're going to send you those out-of-school contacts, so they're still sending you that, so it's on a weekend or after hours and a child was in contact with a positive.
And then we trace them for the weekend, yes. Oh, it, it's, it's seven days a week.
Okay.
It doesn't shut down on the weekend.
But yet there's no letter, there, there's not going to be any, there's, it's going to be a phone call. I mean, as far as your son can't come to school Monday, because we got.
They have to call.
Depending, I guess it's a kind of a complicated process. If it's on the weekend and the Health Department receives the information that is sent to them, here's the contact for Doug Dodd, the phone number, the Health Department calls and says, uh, Mr. and Ms. Dodd, your son, Doug, um, has been in contact to a positive case and cannot come to school for blah, blah, blah. End of story. Then we get, that name is emailed to us right before you can come back to school. And we disseminate that information to the school, and then once you come back for our documentation purposes, the school creates a blanket letter to put in your attendance file.
So the quarantine child doesn't have to go on and check in online that they're in attendance?
We want them to do that.
Okay. I, yeah, I thought that's, we're still wanting them to check in.
Absolutely.
Because we let them do their online school.
That's correct. Because all of those students still have access, even if they're not in school, to do their learning through Canvas.
But the letter that goes in their file for attendance reasons is, if they're checking in online, it, I don't really understand.
Well, and, and there's a little bit of confusion with, with Dr. Hebert in the morning on that, with the checking in on Canvas versus, okay, they're out for COVID, but really they're in because they're still checking in and doing their work on Canvas.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you don't do weekend contact tracing?
Yes. Yes. Oh, yeah.
So you're saying if my child is at a party, at a birthday party, at somebody's house, you're going to get a communication about the other students? I'm not talking about the, the person that now gets it.
It's on the school.
It's, yeah, this is a person's house, because I know I've had circumstances where the school system wasn't involved with that contact.
We won't be involved in.
So that's why, that's the only reason why I say contact tracing on the weekend.
We contact trace.
You're only involved in the primary person that would have, let's say, that, you know, that would be the person that, that has, that is positive.
We deal with the positives.
But you're, but, but the other individuals, they may be all our school system, but if they're a private event, we're not going to be contacted as part of that tracing.
They, that would have to be something with the Health Department.
And that's what I mean by, by the weekend.
We track when a contact is, a contact to a positive at the school. But there's so many that come in, their test results come in on Saturday and Sunday, that that cycle starts, where you, it's in the school, but we have to contact trace and provide that information to the Health Department, so that we can try to get those students called before Monday so that they don't come to school.
And, and I, I understand the idea of the letter, and we, we all want them focusing on vaccine. I think though, the, the challenge we're going to be seeing and you, or you all are going to be dealing with is how those dates are, you know, how those dates are all communicated. It works well if that parent is saying, okay, my date is, I can return to school on this. But the school system was, was kind of, you know, had that information that you all could, you know, really guarantee that you knew, okay, they're coming back on this date.
But we are getting that from the Health Department. They give us their return date.
They're still going to give you the return date?
In the email. We know from our correspondence with the Health Department what their dates are for quarantine.
And I guess I'm confused, and if they're not giving the letter, that's what I assume the, because you said they weren't sending the email letter.
Well, they're, they're not.
To the family.
To the family.
They're giving them a list of names and dates.
So you're still, you're, you're getting the list of names as you always have. The only difference is, is that that individual family will not be getting the letter to return to school.
Right.
And so Kennedy, they used to receive a letter, the family didn't, and the school were waiting on that letter to let the student back in. That letter's been cut out. And what kid, and they're still getting their list, so they know they can mark the system on when that student's supposed to return.
But that will be communicated to the, to the parents verbally though, right? I mean, who, I mean, who's going to, who, that's a school, the principals, or is that?
Again, I mean, you know, what day of the week it is, if the schools make those phone calls, they will tell them Doug Dodd can return on February the 10th. If the Health Department, if it's on a weekend, Mr. and Ms. Dodd, your son can return to school on February the 10th. They're given that verbal of when they can return.
I know what my daughter was doing Sunday afternoon, that's all I got to say. She's on the phone.
We get the verbal, but we also have it in email. Just no letter.
Yeah, that, that's, I think, the difference. I was under the impression you were saying you all were no longer getting notification from DOH.
No. We get them.
You're still going to get it. The parent, though, is not, they're just going to have a verbal.
Right.
It's all verbal with the parent and the DOH.
Correct. So as long as we're getting that date that we know that student showed or shouldn't be in school by this date, that's, I think, the most critical piece.
And how long has this been, uh, that they stop the others?
Probably three weeks.
Oh.
So we've been doing this verbal.
Again, to me, it was the, the date that makes sure that Student Services, the school system was knowing that information.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just been a different process, but all the information is getting out there. I mean, it's, truthfully, it's, it's on fairly smoothly. Um, it's just, you know, the, given the schools a little bit more having to, you know, get those letters, put them in the file, but, um, but yeah, it's, I mean, so far, there's not really been any glitches.
And, and I guess just to pause to say thank you again, this has been monumental, and, uh, I know talking with other districts, we, each district's had to find the best fit for them with, with the Department of Health, and your department has done just phenomenal. And, and I know it filters down to the school levels and the administrators and everyone.
Everybody is really.
So thank you.
Pitched in. Thank you.
Any other questions on that component? Second component, um, that I wanted to share is, you know, we had talked at the last meeting about, um, opening it back up to mentors and volunteers. So we've come up with some wording that I wanted to present to you all to see what your thoughts were, and I will tell you, um, I think there's like eight words. It took us probably a week and a half to do. Know that there was a lot of time and effort put into this.
Words are powerful.
They are very powerful. So, um, Mrs. Crowe, Mrs. Kayler, Mrs. Woefel, we all kind of sat, Mrs. Himmel, and, and talked through. So here's what we're looking at, is, um, we're essential services allowing into our campus. And, you know, we've already had YMCA before and after school, live stream, all those different groups we've currently allowed. So we've added this phrase, such as individuals serving in a mentorship capacity and military recruiters. So those two peo, groups. So when I say mentorship capacity, whatever the school determines would need to support students in a mentorship capacity. We've also added that phrase to the tutoring section, because right now it says tutoring at schools may begin if it's conducted by staff currently employed in the Citrus County school system, and we added the or, or an individual serving in a mentorship capacity. So trying to keep it general, so we're not having to list every single group and name and exclude somebody and have a school call us and say, can this person come, can that person come? I think schools can make some decisions based on that word and phrase. We want to monitor this, and then we'll come back, because we have this on the agenda every month, if we want to then open it up to additional volunteers, because right now this doesn't say just every volunteer and everybody else. It really is focused on individuals serving in that capacity within the school set.
Well done.
So, comments?
Dr. Hebert.
Yes, yes.
And timeline will be, we'll get the word out to the principals. Um, we've got a principal meeting next Tuesday.
Yes.
So we'll explain that to them, once they have a place in, in the schools where they, the mentors can meet or a process in place to make sure everybody knows that once they're in our schools, they go by the same guidelines that we use, then they'll, every school may have different ones coming at different times.
So the implementation, you said, with the wording now, will that be, in theory, effective immediately?
Right. The, as Ms. Himmel said, we need to work with the schools on starting to get that information communicated out. They have to determine, find a place and, and system, and all of that in their schools. I did want to share that I did speak to Ms. Smith, who's President of the Union. She gathered her team together, they got some thoughts, they were also, they understood the importance of having them back. I will tell you, their, some of their concerns were, if a teacher felt uncomfortable having someone in their room, that teacher had the ability to say, I'm not comfortable having someone in my room right now. And I said, we've always had that in place with volunteers and mentors. If a teacher feels like right now they don't need someone in the room, they can make that decision. We don't put extra people in teachers' classrooms without their ability to make those decisions. So, you know, we, we agree that was something, but they understood, I will tell you, they were cautious as well. They felt like what we were doing was working, but they understood the need as students were coming back, needing some additional support. So they certainly understood kind of the, the purpose behind that.
And I think that will handle a couple of the comments that I received, because some of the administrators and a few teachers were worried that if we just said, okay, everybody can come back in as a board. and a few teachers were worried that if we just said, okay, everybody can come back in as a board, they were worried that they would be, have some problems with people that really weren't serving the educational process. They just wanted to come back in and help. And they, they wanted to be able to have some local control over what's going on in their school, and they maybe wanted to make, um, like mentors and people that want to come into our schools to maybe call or make an appointment with an administrator to make sure that there's a clear understanding of what they're gonna do when they're on the campus.
And that's why the wording ended up the way it is that we recommend it, because that way, the individual schools, there may be some that are more important to one school and not so much another. And Mr. Kennedy, to answer your question, it will go into effect immediately. It may take us a week to get the word out and get someone.
Sure.
So they know where they're gonna be with the kids, okay? Mr. Dodd?
Yep. Um, so at our last meeting, we talked about, I think you'd given us the number that there were 145 mentors, trained mentors. So I'm, I'm a little concerned over the wording, like is someone coming in to read, uh, let's say, we're focused on third grade literacy, we've had these kids that have been out and have nothing to do in online learning, they're coming back in, working. Uh, is, is someone who's coming in to help them with reading?
I, I can interpret that as a mentorship, I'm gonna give another example. We have a group, we have a group of people that they have, some folks come in from the, the local bank or others and help with financial literacy, and, and go into a classroom and provide support that way. That to me is mentoring students and helping students. I, I don't necessarily think it is one-on-one, it could be mentoring the whole class. We have, um, the, the River Project, that group of, of people that come in and help, that's mentoring students. I think we're trying to keep it general and not go into specifics to say, this is our definition of mentor. So we use the term mentorship capacity, and then schools can then interpret that. I, I would think any of those pieces could be interpreted as how we mentoring and help supporting kids.
I think it's a great way to empower.
I mean, if we said, I'm gonna come in and do your bulletin board, I, I would probably, as a principal, say, I think it's probably best served, you do your own bulletin board, and let's wait for a little bit to bring that volunteer in to do bulletin board. But if I want someone to help work with miscounts on English and, and, and doing grammar, then that, not that she needs that, just as an example. Then that would be something that I think we could, could offer, or come in and present something to the class if the school and the teacher are comfortable having them come in and do that.
So we're not getting hung up on these 145 trained mentors, I mean, this could be a mentorship capacity?
Mentorship, so it could be a volunteer that's, because we know we have many volunteers out there that do some of those types of things and mentor and support kids, we don't want to limit them. That's where we kind of were getting hung up on, how do we do that? So we felt leaving it in that realm gives us enough flexibility to make some of those decisions. And the schools, I think, will be able to make those decisions, reaching out and deciding.
And this is for our already approved mentors and volunteers, we're not gonna open up the dates for new and yet. So we're just, these are the ones that are currently approved.
Good. And I, yeah, I, I think it's, I, I like that idea too, of letting the school principals and letting them determine where their needs are and where those groups that come in that might fit best for them, so.
And they, they have somewhat of a definition here, so they can use that to make some decisions, but it doesn't lock them into, well, here's the list of people allowed, here's the list of people not allowed, which I felt like we were getting, we started thinking of like, when is it gonna stop? Like, who do we, who are we gonna forget? We don't wanna forget anybody, because we know everybody's trying to help. So we thought this kept it very open, if that works.
I think it's wonderful. I was very involved years ago with the mentoring program developed by the good of it. When you say the word mentor, you're saying something in a person who is really, um, training or knows much more than the surface level about what they're doing. It's, it's not the bulletin board, it's much more, it's a person aware of the child and the needs of the child. So I'm glad you put some different words in, because I would be the first to question, I mean, 35 mentors on the real. You know, tell me about it, both the way you're saying it, it can be a little broad, but not so broad as to be a bulletin board.
Right. Um, so then the next piece that, um, that we've adjusted, and we've kind of been doing this all along, but Mrs. Crowell and I felt this needed to be embedded into the plan. For campus events, we had, schools will hold school and grade level assemblies virtually or digitally when possible. We're leaving that wording in there. What was in there prior was that, um, face-to-face assemblies will be discontinued till further notice, and any large group gathering over 50 must be approved by the executive team. We have removed those two statements, and we're going to say gatherings will follow capacity guidelines, limitations as per athletic programs indoor and outside. So that way, currently we're 35%, so schools can make a determination if they wanna have an indoor gathering and have some kind of assembly, as long as they follow that 35% rule within their school, they can make those decisions. And then as the athletic decision drives those changes, it'll then go into effect for any of our other groups. We've already been doing this for drama and music, we just, for some reason, Mrs. Crowell and I had missed seeing this on the campus event, so I apologize that we didn't capture that the last time. But Mr. Mullin assured me, we had already been doing it, we just didn't have it in writing. The other piece that came up was, I know there was conversation about prom and graduation. Um, I will say, I was on a SAC council, um, last evening with Ms. Mason. She listed a variety of events that, that right now, we're not ready to make a decision on, this is what we're gonna do, but we're certainly looking at face-to-face and in-person. And as Ms. Mason stated, I thought she did a beautifully job of saying, we're just gonna look at each event in, as we move along, and we'll open those up as we move along further down the line. Did you?
Of course.
Of course.
And I wanted to share with you that, um, as you know, Mr. Bittner and I, with our, um, student groups, we meet at high school. So we brought that up at all three le, all three different schools, and I'm amazed, we're not amazed. Um, it's exciting to hear some of the suggestions that the kids have given us for graduation and proms from. Some have said, let's just go to a formal dinner, it's not about the dance, it's about the king and queen. Um, some have said, let's have it outside, some have said, maybe just limit the seniors. So we're keeping them very involved, because we've given them tasks to go out and talk to the other kids in their schools. So as we move forward, within the next, probably month, month and a half, we'll be able to come back to you all and say, here, the schools are looking at, and we'll keep you posted, each time we make a step back direction, okay?
And it's, it's almost five o'clock, and we need to call for some comments in case we're missing out. It's all there.
We also have the public hearing.
Oh. Okay. And you're up.
Uh, Mr. Gibson, he's right, we just need to recess.
Is this now, and then going to the public hearing?
Now we're gonna have a chance to talk to Dr. Hebert again, right? His programs, his, I just wanna make sure.
Afternoon, board members, uh, we have four public hearings this evening for policy updates. Uh, the first is to adopt revisions to Policy 3.40, Safe and Secure Schools. Uh, this is a revision to the policy since the board approval of June 9th to reflect clarification in Section 3B and changes in Florida statute 5A, uh, brand nine. So, uh, that's one, uh, one little change on page six. Be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Have any comments? One more time, I guess we do three, any comments from the audience? Third and last time.
Move approval and adoption of provisions to Policy 3.40, Safe and Secure Schools.
Second. Which one are you on with it?
Ms. Cans.
Okay. Now, Mr. Pitt, in motion to adopt provisions to Policy 3.40, Safe and Secure Schools, followed by Mr. Cans. Any discussion? Holland, favor?
Aye.
First, care is five zero.
The next one is to repeal Policy 4.32, Title 1, Parent Involvement. At your, uh, January 12 meeting, you updated Policy 2.262, Family and School Partnership for Student Achievement to include the provisions for the, uh, so that this is a duplication, so we're just repealing the policy.
Anyone who have known, uh, approving and adopting of Policy 4.32, Title 1, Parent Involvement? Any comments on the Title 1, Parent Involvement? Third and last time, comments on, uh, Parent Involvement?
I'm in motion to approve, uh, Policy 4.32, Title 1, Parent Involvement.
Second. Look, this is Luke, I'm just trying to say, second by, uh, Mr. Bryant, to approve and adopt, uh, Policy 4.32, Title 1, Parent Involvement. Any comments? Paul, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, care is five zero.
And the next one is to update a policy 6.115, Teacher Aides, Parent Professionals, to add a citation related to Title 1. No, no changes in the language.
Any comments on approving and adopting the revision to Policy 6.115, Teacher Aids, Parent Professionals? Any comments on a revision to a policy 6.115, Teacher Aids, Parent Professionals? Last call, approve or adopt revision to Policy 6.115, Teacher Aids, Parent Professionals?
Move to approve and adopt a revision to Policy 6.115, Teacher Aids and Parent Professionals.
Second. I'll give it. Mrs. Bryant, uh, for motion to approve the revision to Policy 6.115, Ms. Cans, second. Any comments? Paul, in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, care is five zero.
And the final policy update for this evening is our revisions to Policy 8.10, Safety. I know you've seen this one a few times, we actually have another one that's coming up after this. But this, uh, is a revision to include additional requirements under Section 4. Uh, and also in addition, made at your October 27 workshop to add the requirement for annual certification, which is in statute.
Any comments to approve and adopt provisions to Policy 8.10, Safety? Second call, uh, any comments to approve or adopt provisions to Policy 8.10, Safety? Last call for any, uh, uh, approval or adopting provisions to Policy 8.10, Safety? Uh, motion?
Move approval and adoption of revisions to Policy 8.10, Safety?
Second.
Is it moved by Mr. Cans? Second by Mr. Dodd, feel free to adopt provisions to Policy 8.10, Safety? Any comments? Holland, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, care is five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Bittner, back to you.
One more piece that we are working on at this point is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So. Good. So Section 6.3, which is on the media center book checkout, we've asked Ms. Androwski to meet, I believe, tomorrow, she has a meeting with her media specialist, so they're gonna talk about, what are some protocols, things they can put in place to begin to open up our media centers, because at this point, they've not been open for students to come in. Not that students have to check out books, but they've had to use a different process. So we feel we're to a point now where we have some safety protocols. They have been, um, talked about some creative ways they can get the media centers back open to get students back in and, um, access, access the book. So we'll bring that to you at the next, um, meeting, but they are gonna work on it, and hopefully we can get on, get moving on getting that opened up for our students. Any other comments or questions for me, and my team is here, if you have questions on the plan, changes you want us to look at and consider?
I just need to say thank you again to the staff, you make us look so good, and it's got such a reputation at the summer meeting that we had. They just mentioned how great you guys are, and, you know, we started with a 91-page reopening plan from last spring, and we're still open, and I'm still amazed that there are states that have not opened their schools, because it can be done with a very competent staff, Mr. Dodd.
Yes, and, uh, that SAC meeting from Citrus High, I was on that meeting too, you know, and so, uh, you know, there were dates, they had dates down for those events, so.
I think that.
It's not like, um, I mean, it's definitely on the tape, it's definitely working towards those events. I think that's what this board wants, is to have, do the most that we can do to bring a sense of normalcy to our senior class, all of our students. We've done a great job with athletics, we, you know, the CARES plan with the band and drama and all, and, and the different groups chorus, I mean, that's important. And so I really hope we keep moving in that direction. I know Mrs. Himmel's been, um, you know, wants to methodically take this. And I, and I have a problem, I think that's the best way to go.
Thank you.
Um, so we just want parents and students to know, we, we wanna get it open as quick as we can, we're doing what we can to do that. I certainly hope, I mean, when we deal with proms, and there's a lot of issues, and we've talked about in behind the scenes, um, you know, that there are opportunities for the school district to do things. If we don't, as a school district, have a prom, they're still gonna have a prom, and it might be a lot worse and, and unsafe than, than anything. So I want to, I know we're looking at that, I know, you know, the options for in-person graduations has been discussed, it continues to be discussed, and I hope that we can, we can achieve.
And, and I, I just said, I think the way Ms. Mason phrased it was, and all the other schools are doing this, they have those dates, but for us to say right now, we're doing a graduation in person, this is how it's gonna look, we can't, we can't answer that. And she can't answer that and commit to that yet. But I think the plan is, we do wanna move in that direction, so we're gonna make as many plans as we can, and then as we know more information, I mean, they've done graduations so many years, they can pull an in-person graduation, it's not gonna be an issue, and they've done the drive-through, so they know how to do that. So unless there was a different way to graduate, they have the two in the back of their pocket, they know how to make it happen, either way.
And, and I think that is good, and I'm glad, again, we're moving methodically, but I think the concern is just that we are trying to, as a board, say, we are looking towards that we're going, we want to do as much as we can in the safest way we can. And I think the only concern I get is when we know there's a date, that we are working towards it. And that's what you, you have expressed, that, that that's the case. Because it's, the only thing is, is it's like, well, well, we can't, we can't pull it together in time. Um, I, I, I think there's, at this point, there's no reason to me that we wouldn't be having in-person graduations, again, when we are having sporting events that are of a similar type nature. So I hope we're just actually looking towards those plans, since we have that opportunity to have that time.
And, and I think the, the question becomes, like, right now, if you were to say, let's plan an in-person graduation at 35%, and we look at our stadiums and have to make decisions, but yet, maybe by April or May, things are gonna look different, and it'll be at 50%, maybe even 100%, that we could say, we can do it much differently. So I, we don't wanna commit to something that we think we're gonna have to come back and backpedal and say, oh, no, we can't do that. People will purchase tickets, those types of things. So we're not saying, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, the, the intent, I know what Mrs. Himmel, is she wants in-person graduations, she wants these events to occur in person, principals want these things to occur in person, they've made that very clear. We just have to make sure that, we, we wait until we know officially, let's make the decision. If you think about when they did the drive-through graduation, how quickly they pulled that together? It was a, it was not months to plan that, because by the time we, we found out we were going into lockdown and we were not able to come to school, I think it was maybe within three weeks, they pulled it together. I don't know, Mr. Mullin, if you know, but it was a very short timeframe that they pulled all that together. So I believe, knowing we know how to do an in-person graduation, they're already can put all those things in place. It's just a matter of, what is our capacity gonna look like? What is the mass?
And let's remember that with capacity, a graduation's capacity is different than even a sporting event. We actually would have more capacity, because you have the field, for example, that we would, you know, that would not be part of a game, but it is part of capacity.
But they are, and that is being, I know that is all being looked at, so they have to look, but, you know, we have to look at it, do we still have to social distance or physical distance? What is the space of that? All those pieces are being, all that's being reviewed and talked about right now.
And, and something that, you know, we have to realize too, each event, um, each community has a different standard for capacity. We've set a capacity as we have, that doesn't mean that that capacity is, um, is set in stone everywhere. Because I know with sporting events, our teams have gone to many sporting events that had 100% capacity. We've gone to sporting events that had 50% capacity. So, and, and those have been. So, and, and those have been accomplished. We've set capacity at thirty percent.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I'm sorry. But, but that doesn't, I mean, there's nothing that has set that determination of what that capacity is. That's been a number we've set.
Right, and that's, that's why I'm saying, when I put some of this about even like events happening in, in the band, is we're following what the athletics is determining. So if athletics makes that change, and we determine that's a change we make, then we'll follow suit in all those other areas.
But that becomes a question, is there a reason we're still staying at thirty-five percent of those? Is there a reason we have not, you know, now that, that we're getting along, is there thirty-five actually, what a normal capacity is, you know, that's enough where it takes care of most of our people anyway that's coming?
I think in abnormal times, there's no such thing as normal. I think that if you look down at Pasadena County, they're actually going backwards in their capacity allowance. Fernando County's going up. We've made the decision with us and the board, thirty-five percent, we haven't had any major issues, we've canceled seasons, canceled multiple games and what have you. That seems to be a number for us. We felt that at this point in time, there's no need to change that. But certainly if it's for the board to open up to a hundred percent, my athletic directors love it. But that's the reality.
I think that's a fair response, I mean, as far as that we haven't had an issue at a thirty-five, but I didn't know if there's something we're doing to, to say, okay, you know what, next month we're going to try forty percent.
Right. At this point in time, no, we haven't had this conversation, those conversations certainly on the table. Right now, the decision to stay at thirty-five percent is because that seems to be a good number for us without having any major issues, without having to cancel, so. But you're hundred percent right, I think it's, I think it's a local threshold, you know, like I said, Pasadena County's gone backwards, Fernando County's gone up, we've decided to stay the same, we haven't had major issues, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
And, and what a...
This is Council, say something.
Oh, very.
I just, we've got student involvement and I love that. But if we start talking about some of these social events that the kids want, they're going to have to secure venues and photographers and things like that. And we need to have a clear understanding that they need to be have, to get some latitude, don't sign contracts. I had an instance with, I was a junior class sponsor, where some photographer tried to say, well, no, you can't hire anybody else because, and I said, I reminded him that the child that signed the contract was under eighteen years of age and go ahead, I'll see you in court. But, but we've got to monitor these kids through the administration to not get too excited about this and start making deposits that may not be refundable if we have to cancel something.
I, I think, I think the takeaway here, this is my opinion, is what was said earlier about the central, the central's very strategic and very targeted in our expansion of offerings and expansion of capacity, and you look at those things. I think right now, the conversation we had the other day was, it's way too premature to make any, any concrete set in stone plans, but we're working toward having a traditional graduation, working toward having a, a, adopting for proms, but I think it's just too premature. The superintendent's very involved in that, she knows how much our students want it, she knows how much our family wants, and our community wants all those things, so.
We just need to watch those kids, that they like to do all of that work, they like to do all of that stuff, and we've just got to make sure that they don't, they have some adult guidance as they get their, all of it in order.
But as we progress, going back to Mr. Kenny, we progress through the spring, we're watching the numbers, and it, it's free upon by everybody that we want to increase capacity, I'm certainly not opposed to having that conversation, and if you want, we can do some work and bring it back to the board, I may get a workshop to see if there is an opportunity to expand capacity at this point in time.
I like that idea. I mean, even, you know, I'm thinking about baseball and softball games now, and, you know, they're limited, I can't believe the small number of people that go to softball game now. You know, I, I'd like to see them have a little more leeway with having more people.
Right now, just, just so the board knows, I've talked to the athletic directors, what they're doing to try to increase that capacity is that certainly they've gone up in the stands and they're applying the rule that we use for football and soccer and what have you, but, and those bleachers are somewhat smaller, you're right, they're very limited capacity. What we've talked about doing was marking the left field, right field lines to the pin of home up facility we're at, where it's conducive, making like, I think, three foot by ten foot boxes for families to sit in and around, and find out how many of those boxes we can get down the left field line, down the right field line, just to increase capacity. Once again, like I said, I know our athletic directors would like to increase capacity from a monetary standpoint, but they don't want to do that jeopardizing the health safety of the welfare of kids or jeopardizing canceling games and what have you. We've, we've done this very well to this point, and certainly don't want to go too aggressive in the reopening of it, so. But certainly I'll be more glad to bring the information back in the workshop if that's what you'd like.
Yeah, I, I'd like to find out what, what, Tito, what, what his perspective is with the health department on it too, I mean, with the numbers, because I think Mr. Kenny's right, these other counties, and I've been to a lot of basketball games, because Charlie's been playing basketball, you know, I think that's, and Fernando, the only ones that still have online ticketing too, you know, and, and it's just, the, the, the numbers are a lot higher, I mean, you know, I, I like what we're doing here right now with mask, and we're doing the online ticketing just to honor the thirty-five percent capacity, but, you know, eventually I hope we can get away from that and get things back to opened up again, but I would, I, I'd like to have more discussion at the workshop.
It's pretty certain to do that. I would just say, whether we go thirty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, as long as we limit capacity, we have to have a mechanism by which we pre-sell tickets because we don't want to put our staff in that position of sitting at the gate and somebody driving up from Lando Lakes High School hoping to get in and say, oh, I'm sorry, you can't get in, you're low capacity, that's not fair to our staff. So, but having said that, I do think we should have a conversation about expanding capacity, and we'll, we'll be prepared after the board workshop, if that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or...
No, and, and I, I just wanted to say, we do really appreciate, we're, you know, our job is to keep asking questions, you know, this is our role, and so we appreciate and don't want that to get missed. We have so valued, you have protected us, you have put in protocols that have opened our schools, that are providing opportunities. Mr. Bishop knows, I mean, I am grateful as a parent that my child has been able to do things that many children around this country are not being able to do. And as a result, our kids are flourishing. So thank you, and, and thank you, Dr. Eber, for what you do.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll expand on that too, I mean, I, I think it's good, it's a discussion to have, I'm not sitting up here saying I want to open it up to forty or fifty percent, I, I want to know what Mr. Rubio says, I want to know what other counties, you know, just look at the numbers, I think the numbers are starting to come down, I, we've seen that positivity rate, but hopefully we can get it below ten, I don't, I don't think it's below ten yet in Citrus, but, you know, so those are things, I, I don't want to be misconstrued that I'm saying, oh yeah, we need to open it wide open, I'm not saying that, it's a conversation, yes, a conversation.
Never changing conversation.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ball, I think he will, suddenly he will.
Ms. Powers, I think you have public here, or, uh, public comments, if I could.
Private, public comments.
Oh, okay. Both good, has public comments, yes. Yes, we have, we more.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Miss Gold, so you can go ahead.
Good evening. All right, I ask you to approve the twenty twenty-one sixteen Forest Ridge Fire Alarm System Upgrade Award to Midwest Alarm Company, doing business as BCI Integrated Solutions.
Approve of the bid of twenty twenty-one dash sixteen Forest Ridge Fire Alarm Upgrade System awarded to Midwest Alarm Company, DVA, BCI Integrated Solutions.
Second.
It's the blue, I'm second by Mrs. Bryant, uh, on the twenty twenty-one Forest Ridge Fire Alarm System Upgrade, Midwest Alarms, DVA, BCI Integrated Solutions. Any comments?
Um, you know, I don't know who told this, I just told it, but I know when we got in the discussion, I think it may have been related to the figure on the first page, right, two hundred and sixty-three dollars versus...
Correct.
Two hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Three thousand.
Yeah, and, you know, so that's just the cost of doing business, like, you know, I remember, you know, talking to some parents one time about the upgrades at Emory's Primary School, and, you know, they don't, sometimes people don't have a concept of how much money it costs us. And here we have a firearm upgrade that we're going to spend two hundred and sixty-three, that was two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars on, and the second bid was three hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred, you know? And there's not a lot of bid, I mean, there's, you know, two bids received.
Right.
You know, and so it is pretty amazing, but, you know, it's work that we have to do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, there is policy.
Now, I ask for approval of budget amendment number four, amended December twenty twenty. You were provided those, the copies were distributed today. Major changes to the budget amendment. We have more tuition reimbursements coming in for post nine eleven tuition. Yeah, that money comes in and out. We've received some grants, that money basically comes in and out. The biggest hit to the fund balance is with the raises and everything that hit in December, we had to hit the fund balance for about a hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents at this time, to accommodate for those raises beyond what we have budgeted. Food service, a little bit of change in how their revenue's coming in because they're in emergency feeding now, so more of the box lunches, more of the, you know, the food that's being handed out on certain days for families. And so that was increasing their claims reimbursement, but they also had to increase the amount of food that they're purchasing, so food service had some changes in their fund balance, our federal and CARES dollars, additional funding that's been awarded on the CARES front, and this was included in the presentation at the workshop, the highly quality, quality reading and the data scientists, those budgets were added as they were awarded. And then in capital outlay, we had to increase the, for the additional Apple leases, so I ask for you to approve this budget amendment, if you have any other questions.
I move to approve budget amendment number four, amended December twenty twenty.
Okay.
You have a second? Two seconds.
Second.
I'm going to move my chair. It's true, I move by, uh, this Brian second, Mrs. Council, to approve budget amendment number four, amended December twenty. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, there is policy.
So going to the budget update, if you're good with that? All right, I did present with you a budget calendar at the workshop, so next Tuesday we'll be meeting with all the administrators to go over what we do know, where we stand right now, just to go over the processes to, so they can start looking at their budgets and trying to prepare for next year. We're still waiting to find out what our exact funding will be from the second CARES package. Some more information that came down, President Biden is looking to give a hundred and thirty billion dollars to reopen schools. We're already open, so we don't know what that means for us.
We want the money.
We want...
Reaping.
Yes. He, um, he's looking to, in, the information provided, he's looking to reduce class size. He would like to hire teachers, custodians, mental health, tutors, guidance counselors, and add more staff, put people to work. Problem with this is, is federal money, give, federal dollars come down, the state tends to hold back because they're lacking in their revenues. So this levels out, kind of, there, you know, federal dollars come in, state dollars get reduced. Typically what happens in a couple of years, we have a funding cliff, and how do we continue to, you know, employ people that we hired when we had a windfall and now the money's gone? So the, the legislators at the federal level trying to get this right is going to be a big key to how the state legislators then turn around. And so we're kind of in a budget flux right now, just trying to figure out what to do budget-wise beyond just how to, you know, staff our schools and, and educate our children. We're looking at a two, two-year deficit in some of these children for learning, so that's going to come to a cost to the district. So those are things we're looking at, and now as we get more information from our legislatures, we'll keep you updated. Any other questions at this time?
Can I ask for some of the investment, financial statements?
Yeah, that's all your information, so. All right, thank you, you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw, you're up.
Check the temperature when you come in.
Please approve this. You got any questions, Chief? Need a filler slot?
It was very short, so I make a motion that we ratify the superintendent's letter in January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, threatening, terminating the interlocal agreement between the school board of Citrus County and Citrus County Sheriff's Office dated July first, two thousand thirteen, regarding director position at the Wicca Pucci Technical College. Second.
Then move by Mrs. Council, second by Mrs. Bryant, uh, to round by the superintendent's letter, the letter dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, terminating the interlocal agreement between the school board of Citrus County and the Sheriff's Office dated July two thousand thirteen, regarding director position at the Wicca Pucci Technical College.
What's the next question?
So, and I, I've read the letter and I've used the packet here, and I just want to make sure the board, we're all on the same page for this, because this is a big change. I mean, this was a pretty neat thing that took place with previous administration, sheriff's office and superintendent, that was, you know, kind of a win-win, and things have changed a little bit as far as needs. But we're not, we're not getting out of the entire agreement, we're only pulling out of the, the director's side of the agreement, is that right?
Correct.
So the other things that are in here right now, they have a training sergeant there that runs the law enforcement academy and also works with the training staff at the sheriff's office. That is not changing right now, correct? That's not what this, it's not terminating the whole agreement, it's just terminating the director's agreement, which we, we are not paying for the director at this time. The way the agreement was set up is the captain in training, oversaw the, what would say, the training academy.
That's correct, the, the director's position was always the agreement of the, the sheriff supplied that position with no monetary value in exchange for the office space for his training division and the members of, of his agency there.
Okay, so with that, and my understanding is, you're taking over as the director of the training academy, which you held that position before, but you're also the chief. And we just moved on the corrections sergeant to teach the corrections side. So the sheriff's office will still have the law enforcement position and the office space that's there now for them, I, I think they have several, I know they have several people housed there, right? Even the accreditation team, I know, their trainers are there.
That, that's correct, so, so this proposal is basically just the, the leadership of the, the academy there is, is replacing that director with a, a staff person from the school district who's accountable to the district for, for those things. So the, the law enforcement training coordinator has that, that nexus to the sheriff still, and that's his training sergeant there that's running the law enforcement academy, and you're correct that the new hire position that we had today will oversee the corrections academy side of the house that we're required to have by FDLE, so.
Which has been our position anyway.
Right, which is, has always been our position, a school district position anyway. As far as the staff, there's really been no change for the, of the office space that that's come up, that we supply the sheriff with for his staff there, the, the staff that he has there now is his entire training division and his accreditation division there housed up on the two hundred building of WTC, so that's not going to be effective at this time.
So there's, and, and this is from Mr. Bradshaw, there's no, there's no cost, I know that, and it was highlighted in paragraph three, the term of the agreement, I know it's July one through June thirtieth, it's been, it's been continued annually at that time period, but there's no cost to the school board in, in doing this. Is that correct? I mean, we're, we're not going to have to pay the sheriff's office any, any money, I mean, I, I know it's kind of a worse, loosely worded contract on the, on the termination...
I can't tell you that there's not going to be any cost because I don't know what the sheriff's office is going to do, there shouldn't be any cost, but I can't, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that there will not be any cost. I don't know what the sheriff's going to do yet, I don't, I haven't had any contact with the sheriff or, or anything else either.
Would it, would it be beneficial just to wait until the, the agreement expired then and not renew the agreements? I mean, I don't want to see a cost to the school board. I, I didn't, I was under the impression that there shouldn't be a cost, but that's.
I think everyone's position is that there was not a cost associated with the director's position. You know, that was always supplied by the sheriff to run the academy. And that was kind of his, his contribution to that, you know, in exchange for the office space and stuff. But I don't know, I have not heard a final of like, is that their position that, you know, it's, we're going to vacate a contract and there's not a monetary value attached to that, so. But I, I agree with you. If, if it does come to light there, then we should look at, do we just extend to our, our June thirtieth date with, with that, but.
And the superintendent would have the ability if, if there were to be a, a question as far as that goes? Because really, and the money side of things, we're, we're really not doing anything different. I mean, we're not funding any of that position right now.
Right.
And we're going to continue to fund part of law enforcement coordinator's position. Correct? But that's still in the plan, right?
And Doug, we had that discussion, that if it's positioned, because right now it's not, we're not concurring any additional costs, but if it was something that they would pull out sooner, that we had to cover that cost for some reason, we'll extend the date to June third.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes. But I think as you were asking, Mr. Doug, too, we're not also asking for increased costs for areas in which they're still occupying and utilizing for their department's benefit. I'm assuming that, does that include things like also the gun range, the driving track? And there's some off-site, other off-site assets that are, that, that we own and maintain?
Yeah, that, that's correct. They don't, they have no cost for using our ranges, driving range.
And we're not suggesting right now any change to that agreement?
No, not at all.
So the obstacle courses out here, I mean, there's no change to that at all? I mean, that's still, they have access to that, they'll be using that for their, okay.
That's fair.
Yeah. I hope that's the way we can.
I don't have anything for him to say.
Mr. Bradshaw's review of the laws of the state boards.
Mayor.
Okay, no. Will you approve the minutes for this?
Move approval of the minutes from the January twenty, I'm sorry, the January twelfth and the January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one school board meetings.
Second.
Move amendments, January seventh, September five, Mr. Doug, to approve the minutes, the January twelfth, two thousand one. Our family?
I'm fine.
Public safety, Harris five zero. Next is to approve the minutes of January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one special.
We did that at the same time. What?
I did it.
Come by and.
Oh, you did, I didn't do that.
That's okay.
Thank you. Okay, we already have the citizen's fund rates. If any of the citizens need to come for.
This is the, the citizen fund is the last one.
No, we did, yeah, we did too. Oh, I'm taking the two thirty then. Are there any citizen fund?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other who's this?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. The Golden Citrus is, Stalers is, is coming up around again. And so this is my shameless plug and for donations. So if we would all be willing to contribute again, if we could get those, it'd be written to this CCEF. And I'm sure we can give them to either Lisa Dell or Fran and we can, they'll, they'll make sure it gets to the right place.
But how much is it?
I think we actually did, I saw on a sheet we did, it was, it was twice, that was a hundred each. So it, it goes to a good cause. It truly does. The other thing is, is it is scheduled to take place on April twenty-third. It looks to be, it's going to be another bus tour, but they are doing the same as the school district and they're trying to monitor it as they're, they're moving along. But if they do do a bus tour, it takes a little advanced planning, so they're looking at that.
Who is the name?
The Citrus County Educational Foundation is the, the big coordinating body. But I will tell you that one of our big supports behind the scenes is Ms. Crowe, who without her, none of, it would all be a mess. And, and everyone shamelessly admits that, we are very grateful to her. Also, Florida School Board Association, excuse me. They, you're, I just want to kind of put this in the back of your head. We are looking to change one of our policies that would impact us slightly, and that has to do with redistricting. Probably will not have a major impact on Citrus County, but as you all know, we represent, or I should say, Ms. Brian represents our district, Mr. Brian, I always forget which number our district is.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So there are twenty-seven districts in, in FSBA. And we have some districts that if they're over sixty thousand, they represent just one, they have one seat. In our case, we have three counties. We represent, by the way, about forty thousand students in total in our district. But then you have districts that have five counties and they represent only fifteen thousand students in the district. One of the challenges is that we have some, we are out of compliance in our bylaws and in our policy about FSBA. So I am the chairman of policies, and so we are walking, we're not running, we're walking to look at redistricting. And I just kind of wanted to put it on your radar. I'll be probably talking about it over the next year or so, because it's not going to happen quickly. But it is just something that, you know, if you see stuff on and you have thoughts, please bring them to, you know, my attention because we have to talk in this setting. It's kind of our housekeeping business, I just wanted to bring it up to you. But, and if there's any questions anybody has on FSBA, you know.
And Miss Mr. Mullin and Andy taking some numbers at FSBA, said, and asked for his numbers about the students and the different schools. I'm told so, thank you forever, you know. I emailed them and they added about twenty minutes, all of us. Y'all are always ahead of the game, and I can remember.
Thank you, that, that, thank you for, for getting that information both as our chair and then also staff. That's a real thing I've talked to Ms. Hemel about. I think FADS is looking at getting involved in that. Has to do with the potential of a standardized attendance formula and policy. There's going to be a lot of conversation, I think, over the coming years about that. So it's going to be interesting. By the way, I will just say also, check your FSBA emails. There was a bill filed today that you'll, I guess, it's not, it hasn't been dropped yet. You'll, you'll hear about it in the next day or so.
Mr. Bishop, did you have something that you wanted to share with us?
No, ma'am. Good, thank you.
Mr. Doug?
Yes, and on the FSBA agenda, the legislative day on March fifth, I guess we're going to do that individually, that's going to be better for me, but I know there's still a cost to that, right? Is there, is there?
Well, you didn't register though. Well, I know, I know that I didn't register, but I think she was big enough.
Yeah, okay, you, yeah, you can let Fran there go and register. But I think we made a decision, we're going to do that individually.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and, and for the public to understand, of course, we don't have travel costs, so it's a fraction of what it might have cost us in past years to, to attend. But you're right, there is a cost, so.
Also, we were at the elected leaders summit and that was interesting. And I thought it's always good for us to get together with county commissioners and councils to talk about things. You know, the live stream issue is still something that is, is, I mean, I'm encouraged by what the county is trying to do with the receiving facility for baker acts and, you know, the focus that we talked a little bit about with the baker acts occurring with younger children. I mean, we need to, we need to try to do everything in our power to get the mental health counseling for those students who are in trouble and, you know, who are saying key words. And when we deal with first, second grader, have to bake rack them, you know, we need to get that mobile response team there to be able to help. So yes, our, it doesn't have to be taken off campus. I mean, I, I've talked to Ms. Hemel about it. I mean, we're doing everything we should do as a school district. Our teachers, guidance counselors, administrator, I think are, are doing everything we're supposed to do. And we just need more help on the mental, mental health side. And I, I think live stream is continually improving that process. So there's a, Marjorie Stoll Douglas Public Safety Commission is going to be on February twenty-fourth. That's the day after our workshop. And it's going to be a virtual meeting, so I'll be involved with that on the twenty-fourth. We haven't had a meeting since like last year, so it'll be, there's a bunch of things I'm sure.
Virtual meeting?
It's virtually, virtually, yeah, yes. And then, you know, from the athletic side, you know, I've talked a little bit in the past about, and I wish we could get competitive bowling and, you know, time-wise, it's tough because of what's going on with COVID. You know, but bowling is a sport and FHSAA has been well received. And I think we can, you know, I would still like to hope one day we can have bowling here. It's not the right time, though, but I would like, you know, I hope we can continue to look at that. But also, the unified sports program has been big with FHSAA with, you know, working with Special Olympics to team up with persons with intellectual disabilities to unify partners who goes without. And they've done that every year. I think this is the fourth year maybe that they've done it in FHSAA basketball championships. They have a championship game. But unified sports, I mean, we've got a great foundation here in Citrus County with the Key Center with what we do for Special Olympics. And it was pretty cool that at La Canto, the La Canto Citrus Basketball Game, at halftime, they had a little game with some of the Special Olympics action on system, which was really neat to see. And I thought, and this is something that, you know, I would like us to look at for the future. Again, it's pretty tough with things going on with COVID right now, but it's a real neat thing. They have two athletes that are team, that have, that three athletes with intellectual disabilities and two that they play. You know, sports is what we advise them. It's really good for everyone involved, so I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Doug, one thing you mentioned with FHSAA, that there's been bills again filed that the governor's looking to provide parents with that flexibility to have and, you know, to hold their kids back. But that creates a lot of challenges for athletics and FHSAA because you have parents that are gray shirting and, and, you know, delaying so to have a competitive edge. And then what happens is we have that nineteen, you know, year old rule, and so it's, it's going to put a lot of pressure on. I respect what FHSAA, they've really tried to do, I think, the right thing, but it's going to put us again into some challenges.
Yeah, I, I hope those things, well, you know, that's legislation, so we'll see what comes about. I'm looking into other, I mean, you know, they're allowing this to take place at the college level, and that, that puts training there as well. And so.
That's it, and you're right, that's exactly what's, what's driving.
And that's what's driving some of it. So it will be interesting to see what does come out of legislation. And that could change, that could change a lot of things, it's really.
And is there any reason, I, I wonder too, if, you know, if FHSAA looks at a, a bylaw or a policy that sunsets, that just is to address these groups of kids that would allow that to then sunset so that we, we have that? Because, you know, we're not saying this is the new norm, we're just saying we, you know, we want to have some grace for some of these kids, but we don't want this to be a permanent situation.
You know, the board, I mean, the, the, the executive director, Mr. Tom, and he's pretty much shied away from that. I mean, he wants to be pretty consistent with things. And there's been some discussion on, on what that could look like, but it throws a lot of, there's a lot of twists in terms of bowling. So it's, it's, it's tough.
I think that's sent there to hundred.
Is, okay, thank you.
But FADS is very involved with that because it started out K to twelve. So we've, not we, some of them have gotten involved and gotten it back down to K to eight. But we have really taken a stance about the athletic piece. And also we're trying to explain to legislators, most school districts, if not every single school district monitors these kids, that they do not deserve or don't have the grades or the ability or have met where they need to be, we hold them back anyway.
Right.
So we're very involved with that, and I would imagine FSBA is probably the same, but that's been a major conversation lately.
What we don't want to happen is that we don't want parents holding kids back from graduating when they made graduation requirements because they want them to be able to have another year of eligibility. And that, that's been, you know, one of the issues. I know that Mr. Leva, I mean, we've had some good conversation with him on the board as far as, I mean, we, when kids are ready to graduate, they need to graduate when they're, you know, now no longer eligible for FHSAA for athletics.
So this, that would be one major bill we need to work individually.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely.
Yeah, we need to.
They've got a couple of letters from the ten to eight months in the South County Chronicle asking, asking the board, requesting the board recognize the mission of the newspaper and education program for nine eight with a proclamation celebrating newspapers and education week twenty twenty-one that occurs March first through fifth. We'll bring this back up at the next meeting, but it's an overview of our rights, some of the response. All of them are news coverage situations, particularly the ones that we, that, you know, are logical. I'll do that, then I'll write a response to that. Secondly, on May the twenty-first, at the half-tendering in Citrus Hills, there's going to be an retirement party for Susan Gill. I think all of you got an email from Mr. Dixon, though. If you take a look at that and see who would like to go, there's a bunch of pots and dogs and dinner and stuff. But Susan, you know, that's helped, she understands so much, not having crazy elections, having normal elections, which she would certainly appreciate, you know, attending. There's a little bit of people suffering. If, if you're going to attend, go ahead and respond to that email that you better respond to what was sent to the Hacha. And this symbol before you leave, I think it'll give you a check for last, the Christmas card.
Oh, yes.
So don't leave without.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else needs to stay, who wants to stay? Ginger?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Sandy?
Well, we're back at our Saks meetings and they're going very, very well. My only request, we are to talk about a local control wise, we bring people back into the school. But Dr. Hibbert and I had the pleasure of doing some four-H judging. And so proclamation doesn't bother me because the Chronicle had three pages, I think, of, of all of our four-H kids in a rodeo. And when you think about sports, I'm, I'm, I wish we would probably, I've done the four-H judging before for Marty, but you know, we ought to get an invitation to some of these things for the four-H kids. They are phenomenal. We did the little types on, on speeches and demonstrations and there was one young man, I tried to fossilize him as, as an ag teacher. I think he was only, what, thirteen or fourteen? But he came, and he came across with his speech with a business plan that I probably haven't heard from a lot of adults. And so many times we talk about, we got to get industry in Citrus County. And sometimes we forget that we had one of the oldest industries already here that we need to support, and that's agriculture. So maybe we should look at, looking at their rodeos and, and some of the things that they do at the fair and really support these kids that are doing the sector. The article in the Chronicle, Mr. Thompson, was absolutely fabulous about the kids and their ages, they're little guys. And they, they, it's just great. We had one girl that did a whole speech on barrel racing, and I'm sure that could become a spectator sport in this county too. Because we've got a lot of old people, they're always looking for something to do. We can distance them at the fairgrounds. So let's not forget our little ag guys, they were looking forward to more propaganda speeches coming up next week. And the kids are absolutely shining. And I have always thanked all the guys at the Chronicle and right now from Jerry Mulligan and all the rest of them, with the column inches that they have given our kids for years. As a teacher, I always cut out any articles, but then everybody started to get the Chronicles, and I just cut out pictures of the Crystal River High School kids for a bulletin board. And it got from one of those, those small bulletin boards to the whole. board, and it got from one of those, those small bulletin boards to the whole wall, and then sometimes hanging down a little bit over the side and stuff like that, of just pictures of the Crystal River High School kids that the Chronicle publishes. So we do, we do thank you, Mr. Thompson, for the column inches that you give our kids. Sometimes you get stuff with bad columns on other kids, but, but the Chronicle's been very, very good for years and years and years to our school kids. But thank you for that.